Four and one J is now in order. We will begin as we always do with the flag salute for those of you in this room, it's back there by that. As we gather here today, we would like to take a moment to acknowledge that our district service area is on the occupied traditional homelands of the Atfala the Indigenous people, lands we now call Washington County and the state of Oregon. We honor the Indigenous people whose traditional and ancestral homelands we stand on. The Tualton Kalapuya, Kathlamet, Clackamas, Tomwater, Molalla, Bands of the Chinook, and many other Indigenous nations of the Columbia River. And remembering these communities, we honor their legacy, their lives, and their ancestors. We also recognize the urban Indigenous Native First Peoples community living in the metro area, which includes over 400 tribal nations. The Hillsborough School District is committed to the recognition and education regarding tribal and local history and working with our local tribes in partnership. Uh, our next agenda item is approval of the agenda. Would anybody like to make a motion?
I'm hoping to approve the agenda.
It's been moved by Director Lopez and seconded by Director McGuire that the Board of Directors approved the agenda as printed. Is there any discussion? Is there any objection? Motion carries. Next up is the consent agenda. Would anybody like to make a motion?
I'm going to have the Board of Directors approve the consent agenda as printed.
It's been moved by Director Ward and seconded by Director Thomas that the Board of Directors approve the consent agenda as printed. Is there any further discussion? Any objection? The motion carries. Next up is audience time. Do we have anybody who has signed up for audience time tonight? All right. I'm sorry? Oh. Let me see if I can find anything. And somebody? I got, I, I have to, yeah, we didn't think there was any, so I don't have it printed out today, so we're, we're conjuring it up. Oh, that's all right. I don't have the thing yet, so. Yeah, take your time. As representatives of the community, the Board of Directors believe that listening to public input is essential to making wise decisions. So we thank you for taking the time to be here. We consider this to be your time to speak and our time to listen. So individual board members will not reply directly to you immediately following your comment. If a board member's here, a board member hears something that requires additional attention, they may request it be added to a future meeting agenda or that the superintendent or his designee may reach out directly to connect with you. We are fortunate in the Hillsborough School District to have a collaborative community that can discuss points of disagreement in a respectful manner. With this in mind, rudeness, ridicule, obscene or profane language, impatience, lack of respect for others, and personal attacks are not acceptable. Comments aimed at state and federally protected classes are prohibited. Audience demonstrations supporting or opposing the speaker or idea are not permitted. We welcome frank discussion of district operations and programs, but in public session, the Board does not hear comments regarding any individual district staff member. Public participation in board meetings is governed by policy BDDH, public complaint at board meeting. There are structured channels for the Board to review complaints involving staff members described in board policy KL, public complaints. As you start your remarks, please share your name and if speaking for an organization, the name of your organization. We allow up to three minutes for each public comment. Feel free to follow up by email to the Board or superintendent. Are you ready to begin?
I think so.
All right.
Hey, my name is Bonnie Wakeman. I am, have been teaching for the Hillsborough School District since the fall of 2004. Uh, my daughter went through both Evergreen and Glencoe. Um, she's currently at University of Portland in their nursing school, being an amazing student that our district helped create. So, um, I'm here because I got to take a look at next year's calendar. And it raised some concerns as a staff member and as a parent. When Bree was little, trying to find daycare on days that we didn't match our surrounding districts was difficult at best. For us starting late or ending late, I could find day camps that did that during the summer period. Um, but trying to find those random days that ours didn't match with hers for Banks for elementary school, it, it was difficult. When I look at this new calendar that I got a chance to see this past month, the random odd days that were not tied to a holiday is really hard to find childcare for. Um, and the days that I'm talking about are really those two Fridays in May. Um, because it's not tied and it's not something that we've done before. Um, and so trying to find that daycare for those two days in May and then also for the four day week, weekend, right around um, Labor Day, that Friday, trying to get it passed by a boss, I would be imagining my husband and his career and trying to find daycare for something that is not tied to, to a holiday would be difficult. Um, my daughter, who has a great summer job, who helps offset the cost of college in high school, she was able to go to her boss and say, okay, I am done with school at this date and I start school at this date and those summer weeks were critical. She made about five to $600 a week working at Dutch Bros. She was a bros, she was amazing, outgoing, don't know where she got it from. Um, but having us have a shorter summer would directly impact the financial ability of our high school students to make their money in summer. So starting a week early, cool. Ending right about the same time, it would be a really hard sell because them trying to pick up those odd days that we have off, it's not going to have the same financial impact. Um, so I asked the Board to truly take a look at the calendar. Starting a week earlier, fine, let's align to the surrounding districts. It makes sense for us to match up Beaverton and Forest Grove and Banks, all starting earlier than us. That makes sense. But us going as far as we are into the summer and shortening that summer and ending on a Tuesday for the students, it's hard to be able to tell your boss of yes, I have a full week of summer when I have to still go to school for two days. I question the ability of those students to come for those two days and make a, make a truly educational impact. Thank you for your consideration.
Any other audience time? All right. Next, the gen, next agenda item is, oh, high school classes, all right. High school course, Animal Lab Care One, Animal Lab Care Two, and Medical Laboratory Technology. And Brooke is headed for the mic.
Good evening, everyone. We are here for first reading of three career and technical education courses. Uh, tonight we have the Courtney of Career and College Pathways, Melissa Pendergrass. We also have CTE teachers from Hillsborough High School, Vet Tech, uh, Meg Marshand, and then also Biotech teacher, Brian Pendergrass, and then also our CCAC Chair will be sharing some of the uh, thoughts of our discussion around these courses, uh, Joe Everton to present that information as well.
Good evening. Um, the first two courses that we're going to look at are Animal Care Lab One and Two, and those are kind of a package deal. So we're going to share those two courses, uh, together in this first slide deck. Um, the Animal Care Lab One and Two courses are part of the Agriculture Pathway at Hill High. Um, that is specific to veterinary science, uh, program of study, and that is a program that is connected to careers that are high wage, high demand um, and high skill in our area specifically and nationwide, um, facing a critical workforce shortage as well. And it's so therefore it's in response to what our community needs and then also with something that our students are asking for specifically at Hill High. And also we're seeing a district-wide ask for that program and as a result of that, oh, I'm just checking out my clicker. As a result of that, this program is one that we offer on the shuttle. So just keep in mind as we're talking about these two courses, this is something that would be open to students district-wide that are accessing, um, the vet science program. Let Meg introduce kind of those two courses and the description of those and we'll kind of bounce back and forth and cover everything together.
Okay, so, um, my name is Meg Marshand. I'm the vet science teacher for our school district. Um, so the two courses that we are proposing are Animal Care Lab One and Animal Care Lab Two. Um, with the idea that Animal Care Lab, um, one, we really focus on, um, training students in how to work with animals, um, really emphasizing, um, safety through proper restraint as well as aligning with, um, what is actually happening in industry. We've already, um, at the, well, last year, um, my students started, um, visiting some local businesses to kind of see what they're doing, um, within their grooming facilities and at their, um, daycares and their animal facilities. Um, so that would be the purpose of Animal Care Lab One. Um, we'll talk about some content here in a moment and then, um, Animal Care Lab Two is going to be more so where they are running the lab. Um, and they are getting the business side, they are, um, scheduling clients, um, as well as, um, handling the finances and doing the bookkeeping and all of that. Um, so yeah, Animal Care Lab One is more of the intermediate, um, foundational course and then Animal Care Lab Two is the advanced course.
I mentioned earlier that vet science is an area that's high wage, high demand, and so when we look specific at at the specifics of offering a new course, we do dive into what is that, what does that mean when we say, oh, it's high demand? We look at the data and so the current Oregon, um, Department of Labor data shows that the average salary within the vet science field overall is 116,000 in Oregon. And then specifically, um, that science, that field of all, um, occupations in that field is expecting a 27% increase over the next seven years. And then specific to veterinary technicians and animal caretakers where this course would focus, looking at a 23% increase over the next seven years. There's currently 127 positions open for veterinarians in the state of Oregon alone, um, that are posted publicly and, um, an expected average annual opening of 678 positions within animal caretaker, uh, work. In terms of the course sequence, um, as we've mentioned in the previous sessions of other courses, there are three required credits for all of our CTE programs of study. So with this pathway, those three courses are already identified by pre-existing courses with Introduction to Vet Science, Animal Nutrition, both being point five classes, um, a half credit, one semester course, and then Vet Tech One and Vet Tech Two being the full year course that are typically taken at the junior and senior level. That Vet Tech Two being that capstone where we talk about senior projects happening and a lot of the hands-on work-based learning. Um, and then there's also an optional additional offering currently with Introduction to Agriculture. So if a ninth or a 10th grader has extra room in their schedule, they could also access Introduction to Agriculture. With Animal Care Lab One and Two, the way that would change is that it would add additional options for students. So students that are really bought into vet science and they know that that's a path for them, this gives them an additional opportunity to take additional courses their junior and senior year and get more hands-on with animals and have more exposure to the different types of occupations that are available within the vet science field. So it's not replacing courses, it's not adding required courses to that pathway sequence, it's adding additional opportunities for students to take courses within that, um, within that pathway.
Um, so the content of the classes, um, again, in Animal Care Lab One, um, we will really focus on safety around restraints and handling as well as understanding animal behavior. Um, additionally, we'll get into some veterinary terminology that we use in the industry just when working with animals. Um, go over basics of grooming and bathing, um, do some hazards analysis that plays into the safety as well. Um, and then skin diseases and parasite identification that we might come across when working with our animals. Um, and then in Animal Care Lab Two, um, again, that is where the students will be, um, more confident and trained to, um, be able to run the lab and have it be a student-run space. Um, they'll be working with all of the office management, so the bookkeeping, the scheduling. Um, and then we'll also continue to practice proper restraints, um, behavior analysis, um, management in the workplace and bathing and grooming and cuts. Um, so really both these courses, the goal of them is to increase, um, workplace simulation. Um, we do have labs and, um, some hands-on opportunities throughout the pathway currently. However, um, it, adding these two courses will just allow us to be more consistent um, with getting those skills, um, developed and, um, growing our students as industry professionals. Um, additionally, there are some service learning opportunities, um, with my students that, uh, volunteer at local shelters um, or make toys for, um, different animals. Um, I know a group of my students are currently making toys for shelters and blankets for shelters. Um, I also am a, uh, district FFA advisor, so there's a lot of community service that we, that my students have access, um, through that organization. And then, um, again, this, both these classes are going to, um, hopefully create a school-based enterprise for our program. Um, the classes are aligned with the, um, ODE CTE Oregon Skill Set Standards as well as we have, um, aligned with PCC's, um, Vet Tech Program, um, and the Oregon Employability Schools, um, or Skills.
In terms of additional costs, the good news is that we were able to invest some additional funds over the summer of the, of the spend down of our um, last cycle of high school success that we were at the end of that biennium, as you know, so we had additional funds unspent that we were able to allocate to a lot of our CTE programs and vet science was one just to bolster some of the equipment in that space, knowing that we could be working in this direction um, or towards something similar. Uh, the space that you see here, uh, was previously a plant lab years ago when the focus on the program was more horticulture focused and, and plant-based. But we've transformed that space to be prepared to offer more of the Animal Care Lab um, skills, whether that be embedded in an existing class or really being able to take on a full option of courses for students to focus, um, on that. So we have that investment. Beyond that, there'll be some consumable materials each year associated with the course, but each CTE program at Hill High has an allocated budget for their program and that's something that would work, um, within her budget. Then we still have access to Perkins Funds because it's a CTE program, Career Pathway Grant Funds as she has more completers running through that program. Um, and then also continued access to Measure 98, um, prioritizing CTE programs. The other thing I'll note too is, so you'll see, um, on that right picture, there's a bank of cages and so there's, that's just making me think of, um, some of the things that we've done in terms of what Meg's done to go out to program, to other industry partners to see the spaces that they've had. She's done a good job of really trying to make sure that the space emulates what is seen in industry so that she can, um, with her students, focus on the safety piece as well in terms of how are we properly handling animals and taking care of them so that the students are in a safe environment, um, in terms of the space and how it's used and then also, um, looking at chatting with risk management. We've done that. We've worked with this risk management to ensure that if something were to happen, even though the safety precautions are in place in terms of the space and then also using similar, uh, liability waivers and forms, also looking at what temperament behavior tests we would have animals go through before they were on the property um, in the space interacting with students. And, um, that is a piece that we're trying to make sure that we're doing right from the get-go because we want to take it slow, start slow and make sure that this is done well so that we're setting up students and the animals for success because having a vet science program where we can actually start to bring animals in and get more hands-on, I think is the direction we would really like to go with this program because it's one thing to talk about skills and theory in, in the classroom, but being able to bring the animals in so that those students can graduate saying that they've had that hands-on experience with animals, especially on interviews, on resumes, that will be a big game changer for our students that are in this program. And then in addition to that, we talked earlier about the course sequence of the impact for students. One thing to note, you might have thought, oh, additional courses, how does that impact FTE? With this program, the Animal Lab Care is, as Meg mentioned, it would be a, a school-based enterprise setup. And so with a lot of our school-based enterprises, those courses do run at the same time as other courses. That's very typical for CTE programs because it's a small number of students, a, a three or four students usually per class in a school-based enterprise working at the same time as maybe another core, an intro course that's running. So that lab is physically connected to the classroom space, so she can be kind of in two places at once and see the students that are running the lab because it is a school-based enterprise. That is not a course, it's not a course that's meant for Meg to run, it's really the students, the three years of skills that they've, that they've put into this program, putting that into action. So it wouldn't require additional FTE if there was a, a need, if that is a course that has the highest need and there is a demand for that, it could be a standalone course, but it wouldn't necessarily need to be, it can run simultaneously with other courses and that's similar of other ag programs in the state that have vet science programs similar to this.
Um, so, uh, within the pathway, um, we do have our, um, College and Career Pathway ambassadors. Um, so these students are going out and they are actively trying to recruit for our pathway. Um, so we're focusing on within vet science. Um, our students are identifying as male, our students that are identifying as BIPOC, and then our students, um, from our low SES backgrounds. Um, our CCP ambassadors are, um, going to the middle schools, they go to South Meadows and they talk during lunches. Um, I also believe they're going to be stepping into some classrooms this year to share about the program to try and recruit. Um, we also do at Hill High, um, we do a Cise Puebe camp that happens over the summer. Um, and my program has participated in that, it's a two-week program. Um, it's kind of like a summer bridge program where students, um, learn about the different CTE pathways, um, offered at Hill High. Um, as well as we do a program that we've called CTE Sneaks in the past. Um, that happens during the winter, that is also a middle school recruitment program. So, um, we are really trying to recruit and retain, um, all of our populations, um, but especially focusing on those listed. Um, additionally, some benefits that come out of the pathway are that students, um, can apply for and earn their Oregon FFA state degree, which is an industry-recognized credential. Um, as well as they will have, um, increased access to clinical opportunities um, and increased access to internship programs. Um, because like Melissa mentioned earlier, um, really having that hands-on portion is what our students are deficient in currently, um, when they are going up and applying for jobs within the industry. Um, we do, again, like I said, have some hands-on experience, but with the addition of these courses, it will just really, um, be able to make that more consistent and enable them to, um, really hone those skills needed for the industry. Um, as far as professional development goes, um, we're constantly analyzing our enrollment data, um, and again, trying to make sure that our pathway is, um, what's the word that I'm looking for, representative of our population within the school district. Um, we're also trying to create the classroom to be more accessible and engaging. So including that hands-on portion, um, that's a portion that a lot of students are craving, um, and increases engagement, um, in the classes. As well as we have implemented, um, at least within our high school, I believe it's district-wide equitable grading practices. Um, we grade on a rubric scale, um, and then again, this is going to just give them that work-based learning, um, component. And then these are our career, community, and post-secondary, um, connections that we've made thus far. Um, we hope to increase these connections as the pathway grows. Um, so the Oregon FFA Association, PCC, um, MEAT Agency with AMFAM, Oregon, uh, Get in the Classroom, Hoffman Farms, and, um, the School to Career.
Joe, you want to come on up? We're going to let your, Joe, share a little bit.
Thanks. Good evening, Board. So we had some good discussion, uh, we appreciate the presentation in the CCAC yesterday and, um, we had some good discussion and questions. Um, you can see a lot of this in the notes, but I'm just going to summarize some of it here. So, um, for strengths, um, we saw certifications for students, work-based learning opportunities, um, school-based enterprise, more opportunities for students. And students can also explore post-secondary work, work, cost-free, something that they wouldn't ordinarily be able to do until they were out of high school and pay for it, right? Um, and more hands-on opportunities for students, um, which is, it can really enrich the experience, um, for students who are choosing this track, this, this program. Um, areas to grow. Um, we talked about animal screening, um, can ensure the safety of, of students and animals and bill credit possibilities and optimal course schedules for the program, just how, um, how the courses are offered on the schedule and things like that. And, um, it was very clear in the discussion that these things, these, these, uh, questions are being worked. So, um, we had a vote of for 11 yes and for no. And we asked, we followed up on the nose and we tried to understand what was going on and I summarized kind of those their thoughts with the areas to grow. Um, but I can tell from the presentation this evening that they're already working on it, so, um, thank you.
Board of any questions?
Some of your question, but a comment, I, I appreciate you bringing up the risk management and the liability conduct. That was going to be my question, so I was forward to hearing more about that and had to get it ironed out. My own question is, are, is this going to?
So everybody at home could hear.
Is this going to debut at a single school or multiple?
It would just, yeah, this course would just be offered at Hill High mostly due to the space needs. So we have that space set up, but it is a program that's on the shuttle. So students are already accessing this program district-wide and it, they would be able to continue to access this course as well.
Questions? My dog was hit by a car this summer and the vet team saved her life, so Animal Care A. All right, next one up.
Come on down. This slide's coming back. Yes. Good evening again. Now we are going to take a look at Medical Lab Tech. Medical Lab Tech is part of the Bioscience Technology Program at Hill High also, and that is within the, the Health Sciences CLA. Also a program that is accessible, um, on the shuttle and open district-wide to students. This is the first year for the Biotech Program on the shuttle, so we have students integrated into the Hill High courses. Um, Bioscience is also a, an area that is very specifically nationwide, but also very specifically to our area, as you know, um, high wage, high demand for sure with local companies like Genentech, um, looking to hire students and already actually doing that. Um, students that are coming out of the Biotech Program already being hired by Genentech, so that's great. It's a partnership that we're looking for with our CTE programs. So tonight we're going to talk a little bit about, um, a course that could diversify the opportunities within Bioscience Technology. The other thing to mention too is with that course, with this program being on the shuttle, um, the new course that we're proposing tonight is a course that could be accessible not only to the new course that we're proposing tonight is a course that could be accessible not only to students specifically in the Bioscience Program, but it would be open to students at any health science program in our district. So if a student is taking help, the health science sequence at Century or Liberty or Glencoe, but they're very specifically interested in being a medical lab tech or learning more about that. As long as they've had one intro course in that health science program, they could also access this course at Hill High.
Hi. So Medical Laboratory Technology or Medical Lab Tech is a 1.0 CTE course. It also would count as a fourth year of science credits. So kids in my pathway regularly graduate with five, six, seven years of science credits. Basically, the idea is that when you go to the doctor and the doctor says, oh, you need this lab test, whatever. And then the nurse comes in and they draw blood or get a urine sample or whatever. They're not the ones who run those tests. They send them off to a lab somewhere, either at the hospital or off site. And medical lab technicians run all those tests. They analyze the results and then they send the results back to the doctor. Two thirds of everyone's medical history is lab test results. And it's a profession that honestly, I didn't know much about. And most of us never really think about, but it's as Melissa will tell you, in high demand. And it falls under biotech. It uses all the same equipment that my students already use. It's just another sort of branch of the pathway that I'm hoping to expose them to and maybe lead some kids to pursue if they find it interesting.
Looking at the industry locally and within the state, the average salary specifically for a medical lab tech in Oregon is a starting salary of 71,000. The expected growth in the healthcare industry over the next seven years is 20% specific to medical lab tech and 8% growth. And that does look like an average of 221 openings currently in Oregon. The course sequence for biotech is currently Introduction to Bioscience Technology. That's a one credit course. The intermediate course is Bio Manufacturing and the capstone is Advanced Bioscience Technology. So there's three distinct courses right now to make up those three credits. And the way this course would impact that program is, sorry, I know that was a big change on the slide. It wasn't as smooth as the last, but it's because it provides a few different ways students could get those courses where some it's additional course offerings with biotech. It's kind of an either or. Every student will continue to take Introduction to Bioscience as that introductory course. Then they kind of can choose either Bio Manufacturing, Medical Lab Tech, or if they have room in their schedule and they're interested, they could take both. But the minimum requirement would be that they take one. So it's kind of adding an additional option if the manufacturing side of bio, bioscience tech is not something that they're super interested in. Maybe they want to focus more on the medical lab tech. That would give them the option to take that course and kind of specialize in that that piece for their intermediate level. And then they would all come back together for the advanced course.
The course is built off of the PCC MLT 110 course. So they have a Medical Lab Technologies Associate's Degree Program. So I built it off of them and in working with their faculty to help design the course. The first half of it is purely medical lab tech. You're talking about what different experiments do these medical lab techs have to do. We do them in a class. So we'll do urinalysis, blood glucose levels, blood typing, and looking at different, for different pathogens that people may have. The second half of the class, again, as indicated, what the faculty at OIT and PCC said I should include is a lot of lab math. It's not necessarily new. It's just looking at math from a different perspective. Most of the stuff that's covered is covered in middle school to early high school, like freshman algebra. But it's not a way that students usually do that, the math. So they're learning how to measure things, learning how to convert from one unit to another. And primarily the goal is to be able to calculate and make simple solutions and for like drug dosing type stuff. Currently, the workplace simulation is the workplace learning. Yeah, right there. I'm getting old. It's a workplace learning because with, with thanks to the bond and a grant from Department of Education revitalization grant, we have a fully functioning molecular bio lab. It's up to industry standard. It's the same as things we find anywhere at OHSU. So my students do more experiments there than they're allowed to do in any other lab because most of them aren't 18 yet. And we're also working with the district to develop a youth apprenticeship in bio manufacturing, which any student in the biotech pathway is eligible for. The academic content standards are primarily the course content and outcomes guides from PCC's course because that's what it's built on. But we do draw on some CT Oregon, CT Oregon skill sets and the Oregon employability skills, especially in the advanced class. We really hit the Oregon employability skills pretty hard. We'll get it right at some point. The, much like Meg's courses, the additional costs are anticipated to be basically nothing. I have a budget through Hill High for my pathway. This would just fit into that based on the number of sections I teach. And again, thanks to Bond and the revitalization grants, we have all the equipment we could ever really want. And any small piece that we, that would pop up that we would need, we can get with Perkins grant money or pathway funds.
The impact to the building for this program is it would, this is one that would have an additional FTE asked, meaning they would, they would need to prioritize this section if it were offered in, in this FTE. So it could look like instead of two sections of bio manufacturing, there's a section of bio manufacturing and medical lab tech. Or if there's additional FTE that could be allocated to another science teacher because Brian currently is not 1.0 biotech. He's I think it's on here, point 667, specific to biotech right now this year. And then the rest is, is general science credit that he's offering with junior bio. So it could just look at how the building is scheduling that out if it's offered based on if students are really wanting this course after the forecasting season. It does offer additionally, not only is it a CTE course, I think Brian mentioned that also would count as a fourth year science. So any students that are really looking to go into post secondary with as many science credits on their transcript as possible for science focused majors, this would give them a fourth year science option on their transcript.
As far as equitable access goes, the, we check every year to see what our enrollment data looks like and how the demographics are doing. The biotech program is remarkably almost exactly the demographics of our school. And I don't know what I'm doing right, but we're 50 50 female, male. We have about 52% Latino, about 48%. I mean, it's remarkably the almost exact demographics of the lie. I, I think it's probably because biotech and bio and tech, the health science programs frequently have to have more females and fewer males. Technology frequently has more males, less females. I'm in the middle. It's great. So it's primarily just keeping that going. And as Meg said, at Hill High, we really do a lot to try to reach out to the middle school students, to CT Sneaks, Cisay Puayde. My program and my ambassadors, we go to Pride of B HSD every year. We go down to South Meadows at least once a year. We are just, I get, get the program and get my students in front of as many eyes as we can. Yeah. Professional development, I go to at least one conference every year. I'm always trying to, trying to add more to my pathway, add more hands on stuff. My focus this year is really trying to diversify my assessment. Get away from just essays and tests, find other ways to assessments. I'll get it right. So these are just, these are most of our, of our community partners. The Primate National Research Center, my seniors get a project from a lab there every year and they do the research in our, in classes, their senior project. Genentech sends some mentors for my seniors every year. They, they were just here actually last week doing mock job interviews with my seniors. And we were really excited to add Twist this year and they did a community or a career presentation for my students. We're always trying to add more. And then OHSU, the hospital in Hillsborough. They were sort of integral in deciding to offer this course because they said that needed more of these medical lab techs.
Okay. We enjoyed this presentation as well. For strengths that we noted, the course aligns with high demand and fun opportunities in our area. The students across our district can ask, access the course aligned with health sciences. I was I, I asked a question myself about this. I was kind of wondering how, how it worked with the busing and how that was growing. And it sounds like, if you look in the notes, you can see some numbers that he gave. Some ballpark numbers for how it's been growing. It's pretty exciting, the interest district wide. It allows four years of science opportunities for students, which is, is always great. Areas to grow, how do we continue to promote this course to our students district wide? And how do we continue to grow partnerships? The votes were 14 yes and 10 no.
Questions from the board?
Um, we said that there was additional FTE that was needed. No, for your FTE is point 667. That just sounds why this is really proud of me. Have the additional courses. And then you also teach other courses. I don't know if it's chemistry and, and all the other things. How does one person pull this up in reality? No.
So, yes, yeah. Currently I teach it. Currently I have five preps and so, but advanced biotech, it's only been about three or four seniors every year. Someday I hope that will be 25 or 30, but until it's a lot, you know, 25 or 30 enough to sustain a full section. I teach that concurrently with the intro class. They're largely doing their independent research. So they don't, I mean, I'm, I'm answering questions, but I want them doing it on their own. And I have two sections of science right now. So one junior bio, one IB bio. Which if I need to go full time biotech, I need to go, it's something to work out at the, at the school level. It's an admin decision. But it really depends on demand, right? If the students want the classes, the school will respond, right? That's what administrators do. It's not my decision.
So if we only, if we only have four students.
Then it probably wouldn't be offered. If there were only four students that wanted this course, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Yes.
What are the real numbers?
Currently?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm going to step away now because he probably knows that better than me.
For Intro to Biotech right now, I have two sections at Hill High that are a total of about 60 students. So about 30 for each intro class. The shuttle program has three students from Glencoe and eight from Century. And then there's an additional seven from Hill High. So it's a small era class. But, I mean, I, I don't think that Hill High has some huge population of students that are interested in biotech while the other schools don't. So if, the program has steadily grown over the years while it's been there. So now we're up to almost 70 kids at Hill High that want to take Intro to Biotech. And I don't think that the other three schools combined only have 11 kids. So I think it's, it's word of mouth. It's getting it in front of students and getting them realize, oh, I can take this class that's at other school. And so I, I anticipate it will grow over time.
This is the game we play with CT programs every year. It's ask this, put on the, the books, what we think that they would be interested in, see what that interest really is, and then build the schedule around the student needs. So depending on, we think that this is something that students would be really interested in based on conversations we've had with students and then local opportunities for jobs. So then we just put it out there, see what the interest is, interest is, and if it's there, then we find a way to prioritize it in the schedule with the FT that we have currently.
A question?
I don't see the American for any notes in our packet. I assume this was last night. So those will be ready for next month when we vote, right?
Yes, Stephanie and I are preparing them and they will be done by Friday. So we'll have those published. It's that we just had her meeting yesterday evening. So we wanted to prep this wonderful team and then we'll get those out to you though by the end of the week. Yeah. Good question.
I noticed you mentioned that it aligns very closely with PCC's BioMedTech 110 or something like that. If we have a student who matriculates a PCC, do they have to take the class again?
Hopefully not. I'm currently talking with the PCC people to arrange dual credit.
Okay.
Hopefully things go. They're interested and they want to do it. So.
Excellent. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Our next agenda item also involves curriculum. Rookie, stay there. All right.
The, the Community Curriculum Advisory Committee and myself have been very busy and it's been exciting. We love to stay busy. So as we've been also listening to course proposals, we've also been doing a curriculum adoption. So this is pretty exciting for us. The team tonight is led by the Director of Multilingual Programs, Arsema Tovar, as well as our TOS's Nicole Mido Ahern and Maxine Jennings. And so the CCAC team had a great opportunity, not only to go do school visits, but also look at the curriculum and hear a couple of presentations also early on this, this fall as well. So with that, I'm gonna let the multilingual director, Arsema Tovar, start us off.
Good evening and thank you for having us here. I am going to let Maxine start right away.
Good evening, everybody. So we just wanted to start by talking about why we need to be looking at an ELD curriculum. So just taking a little look at history. So way back in the early seventies, it was a family in San Francisco that had a student who was an English learner who actually sued the school district because they felt that their student wasn't receiving the support that they needed to get an equal education. That lawsuit went all the way to the Supreme Court. And the family won the lawsuit and from that, that set in motion Title III. So Title III is a program for English learners. And whenever there's a law, then comes funding. So we receive funding to support our EL students through Title III. And then because of the funding, we need to put a plan in place to make sure that we're serving our students. And that plan is the LAO Plan. We have English language proficiency standards that we use to help support our students. And we also use a state assessment called the ALPA 21. So the ALPA 21 is a test that all of our English learners take every year to determine their proficiency level. And it's also the only way showing proficiency on that test is the way that they exit the EL program. So before we had, took, started with this new curriculum, we had teachers making their own curriculum, their own curriculum to teach ELD. So we were looking for something to support them as they're working to support their EL learners.
So when we think about multilingual programs, some of the things that we are committed to is sorry, I need my notes, is making sure that we have dedicated and integrated ELD. And we're going to talk a little bit more about that in just a second. But making sure that our dedicated ELD is aligned to the state standards, which are the ELP standards, and that our integrated ELD is aligned to our content standards. We want to make sure that we have high quality, inclusive instruction. And every student who is an active EL should be in the program and getting services. Also with ELD is we want students to develop their academic language at an accelerated pace. So this curriculum does work and is an accelerated curriculum so that students can gain all the skills they need in order to access content level classes. And then just making sure that students are college and career ready and that we are culturally representing them so that they are recognized and affirmed in the curriculum that they are learning. So the green box is what we're talking about tonight, which is systematic ELD. But what focused ELD is, is making sure that students are learning academic language. So content is used to support the learning of language, but academic language is the top priority of the classes. In Integrated ELD, which is the rest of our day, the content standards are the ones that are the priority and teachers are working together in order to create scaffolds so that students can access the content, no matter their language. And this year we've done a lot with Integrated ELD. We have a cohort of secondary teachers from all of the middle school and high schools that are coming together and learning how to embed language scaffolds into their curriculum.
So I just want to take you back a few years ago, before 2018, we we had every EL specialist trained in systematic ELD, which is a philosophy of, an approach of how to teach English to students. which is a philosophy, uh, of an approach of how to teach English to students who are learning it as a second language. And through that training, it was a five day training, we learned that the, the theory, the philosophy, uh, the framework was introduced. And then based on that framework, um, the teachers then, and I was part of that group, we created, excuse me, we created units. And then the units were then implemented to support our students' English proficiency levels. I think the challenge, the challenging piece of that was that we had to spend most of our time creating these units and less of our time really refining our practice. And so in winter of two thousand eighteen, um, we started, uh, we, we were reflecting on like the, um, data that we were getting from our, um, students who are called long-term ELs, who have been active ELs for more than five years. The research said that it takes five to seven years for a student to become proficient in, in English, in an academic language in a second language. And so our secondary students, our, our fifth grade and up students, um, they're in that area, right? And so then we're looking at our seventh year and above students who were still active ELs and wondering why are they stagnant? We were at two to four percent of them hitting proficiency at the secondary level. So we went to every EL classroom at the secondary level. We interviewed every se- every secondary EL specialist. And the feedback that we got from them was, we need curriculum and we need professional development to support us in this. And so, and they needed something immediate, right? And at that point, um, the framework, the systematic framework was our, um, ad- adoption. So we started buying the units that were, uh, that EL achieve had created to support the framework. So these were units that were already written by proficiency level. And we made a plan to, um, provide that support for our secondary, um, teachers. With that, um, came five days of training, but not just in the theory and philosophy anymore, but now on the curriculum. Because we know that our EL spe- EL specialists come with that knowledge. And so, um, helping them, um, refine their strategies, their practices through the curriculum was very beneficial for the success of our students at the secondary level. So by the end of, um, two thousand nine twenty, which, do you remember what happened that year? Two thousand nineteen twenty? That's the year we implemented. Even with that in place, our students at the secondary level, um, the exit rate increased by twelve percent at the secondary level, which was a huge success. And we were like, oh yeah, we need to, we need to continue with this. Of course, our elementary teachers were like eager to have curriculum as well. So then, um, in two thousand twenty, um, twenty one, I, twenty one, twenty two, I started interviewing every single EL specialist at the elementary level and went through the same process. And almost a hundred percent of them were saying, we just need the curriculum. Please buy us the curriculum. We don't need anything else. And so we bought them the curriculum, we provided the, uh, professional development for, uh, the teachers, uh, and the principals. And by the end of, um, this spring of two tw- twenty twenty three, um, four percent of our, um, elementary students hit more, more hit proficiency than in previous years. Now, in elementary, we tend to have a higher percentage of students hitting proficiency. So four percent is a lot to, to, to be improved. Um, the other piece of data, uh, that I wanted to just highlight, um, that we noticed was that we also looked at the growth. And what we saw is that after implementing K twelve this last year, the huge difference that we saw was a double digit increase in growth for reading and writing, which were two of the domains that, uh, we were having difficulty, um, growing even at the elementary level. So that was huge for us. We also provided professional development for our classified staff. And we do appreciate that EL achieve provides not just professional development for the teachers, but for the admins, and it's a requirement. And then there's also opportunities for classified staff. So we've had about a hundred classified staff that have had this training to support EL, ELD. So, um, in the summer, we started working with the CCAC to bring forth, um, this recommendation. Um, and as Brooke was, um, had mentioned, we did, uh, observations, curriculum, um, review. And now tonight, we's, we're here, um, in front of you seeking, um, approval for the curriculum. Um, going back to just the ODE, uh, adoption criteria, they have ten criteria that they follow. Um, EL achieve, systematic ELD was part of that list initially of the recommended, um, companies. However, they asked to be, they, they asked to be taken off the list because ODE requires them to drop all of their materials in a repository. And then districts just pay a fee to have access to them. Well, their philosophy is you need the professional development in order, development in order to utilize this, uh, material appropriately. And I fully believe in that philosophy because, um, learning a second language and supporting students and learning a second language is a specialty and, and you really need to know how to utilize, uh, the curriculum and what you need to do in order to be able to provide that support for our students.
So, um, uh, Arsema mentioned that they reached out to teachers to really ask, uh, what teachers were wanting and needing before purchasing the curriculum. So these are some of the things that teachers were saying. Um, they wanted training as well as curriculum. They wanted consistency, um, for all of the, uh, for all of the students at proficiency level. Um, and teachers are great at, at producing their own materials, but they really wanted the relief from having to do that so that they could focus on their practice and really focus on their teaching rather than spending so much time creating all of these units. Um, after one year, um, principals, uh, are noticing a lot of great things. Here's some of the things that they have shared that they've noticed. That the structure of systematic ELD has been a great model for scaffolding. And they've even seen that, that learning about scaffolding and supporting language carrying over into, um, the rest of the day, right? Not just during the systematic, um, ELD part of the day, um, seeing growth in accountability and consistency. Um, built into the curriculum is also assessments all throughout, three levels of assessment. So really allowing teachers to know their students well and focus on what they're needing, what they know and what they need to know next.
For the different components, we have, um, at the top picture are the elementary, which are the boxes and the folders, um, for our, for secondary that also has the paraprofessional kit is in a folder. We have the student language logs, which are consumable. And there are six units for elementary and about four units for secondary, depending on how many units you get through in a year. Um, so those are consumable. Each grade level or, uh, grade band has a support kit. So this houses things like spinners, game boards, dice, things that you use often. And then finally, the probably the most important thing that teachers have is slides. So the slides are already made for them and then they can choose which slides to, um, use based on what their students need. Also, teachers and admin are trained in how to use this less lesson observation tool. So for teachers, we can use it as a reflection. And those also go along with rubrics that the company supplies that allow us to look at, um, proficiency levels, student talk, things like that. So we can really dive into, um, the micro level of improving our practice. And then admin can use this as a way of a consistent tool that when they are walking in a teacher's classroom, no matter when they walk in, they can see some of these things.
Um, we were due to an adoption in two thousand twenty one. But, um, again, because of the pandemic, um, we weren't able to, to move forward with it. But we al- we also felt good about, uh, already having started to buy the curric- the, the instructional units for the, for the teachers. Um, and so what we wanna do to, tonight is we really wanna formalize this, um, uh, the systematic ELD as, as our formal adoption, including the units that, um, we have purchased through systematic ELD. Um, where, well, the cost, right? It's, this has been something that we've been purchasing over four years. And so, um, we, um, as you can see, uh, we did, we purchased the secondary kits in two thousand nineteen through two thousand twenty one. And then we started purchasing the elementary kits in two thousand twenty two, two thousand twenty three. We used a braided approach, so we had Title III funding, we had general funding. And we also had our EL outcome, the Halsfield thirty four ninety nine, um, grant that we received last year, um, that provided us with the, the funds to be able to purchase the kits and also support the professional development. I think one of the things that, um, we are, um, uh, we have done is that we have continued to use the trainer, trainer model. So we no longer need, um, EL achieve to come and do the trainings for us. That's Nicole, Maxine, myself, and a, a group of, uh, teacher leaders that have gone through the process of becoming trainers. So now we own that, um, training. We are the ones that provide the training, so we're saving costs there. And, um, four hundred and seventy two thousand five oh two is the total amount that we've spent so far. Um, and then moving forward, um, the yearly expense is our, our student logs, which are also supplemental. So we don't have to have them, but we know that it's best to provide the students what they need. We're also looking at, um, whether or not all of the students needed to kindergarteners need, need a student log or not, and, uh, evaluating whether or not it's, it's the best way to, you know, spend the money. So, um, it's up to a hundred fifty thousand based on our student, um, count for, um, active English language learners, but it probably will be less moving forward.
Like they said, the CCAC has been, uh, had a number of visits. We've, we've heard, uh, a number of times about this adoption, starting, I think, yeah, right before summer. Let's see. Okay, these are some of the comments that we had. I'm, I'm not gonna read this slide to you. Um, I had a couple of experiences myself I wanted to share briefly. Um, so we, we had opportunities to go and view the materials. And I got to go do that, um, looking at, I saw some of the things that you saw pictured. Um, there were, they, they seem like good materials. The one that caught my eye was, um, there was some, there, there was a unit that was about financial literacy. I thought that was a neat thing to, to kind of weave into it. The, uh, so that was the, the material viewing. Also, I got to go, um, and a, a number of us got to go and see, um, see it in action. Um, I went to a session over at Brown Middle School and got to see a classroom in action. Um, there were maybe, I'll say, twelve students in there and one teacher. And, um, it was really interesting to see. I could see that there was a lot of, the, the training does make a difference. I would, I would absolutely need training to work in that kind of a setup. It's, but the, you know, it's what you picture, you know, there's a few students who are kind of engaged. Some are really engaged and, and some are like trying to tune out and trying to engage all these students at the same time. And, um, you know, with, with speaking, with, with prompts and, and all kinds of ways of engaging these students and keeping, and trying to keep them all engaged at the same time. And, uh, it was, they were, they were talking about maps and the compass rose and, uh, you know, building sentences, just talking about the weather and maps and things like that. Um, and I was, I was impressed. It looked, uh, it looked good to me. So, um, and the, I think with the vote, it, it was unanimous. I believe there were sixteen yes. So, thank you.
Any questions? So I just wanna say thank you for your time. Um, I'm very passionate about it, so it was really hard for me to like keep it short.
So again, this is on first reading, so if there are any questions that come to us, please, um, share those with the team and we'll make sure to get back to you before our January vote. So thank you again. And thank you so much to the team and the Community Curriculum Advisory Committee as well. So, thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight. Thank you. Our next agenda item is this month's financial reports. Michelle, do you have anything you wanna add?
Uh, thank you Chair Watson. I just would like to, I'm sitting next to my colleague Francesca. And I just wanna give a shout out to her and her team who came and spent, um, about an hour and a half with the business office team, really working on ways to build connections with each other. And that was just phenomenal work as part of our equity, uh, efforts for the year. So just thank you so much for that. Um, I did wanna point out, there is a kind of a downward trend in both our workers' comp recording and in our total incidents for students. So I know that you guys track that carefully. It's important to you and I just wanted to make a note of that there. And any questions you might have about the cash flows, I'm happy to answer as well.
And questions for this month?
The, the annual report is separated, right?
Yes. All right. Thank you, Michelle. Uh, next up is a calendar update. Connor?
Yes, good evening. Um, I wanted to bring forward that, um, in light of the pre-Labor Day start, I think this is a significant change in between, um, when I presented the first reading and now has been a shorter amount of time than we typically have when we're looking at, uh, the adoption of the calendar. And so I would like to recommend that we move the adoption to January twenty twenty four at our regular session. So it affords our community and staff, uh, input if they're, um, so wishing for this first reading. So that would be my recommendation.
Any questions?
Yes, Connor, how do we, uh, how do we implement, how do we facilitate that community in course?
I think that's a part of this process. Anytime that we have a first reading of calendars, um, over the last nine years that I've been putting them together is we've got feedback from the community, uh, when there are things that they want to share. And, um, as an example, last year, when there was feedback in regards to our winter break going Wednesday to Wednesday, uh, we took that feedback, we made the adjustments. So that's part of this process of being able to utilize our board policy for, uh, being able to look at the first reading and then wait to do the adoption, um, thereafter.
So unfortunately, my next question then is, we, when we started this process, not starting it, maybe the, the month before last, we talked about the large number of people that we had spoken with, teaching the whole, we had a whole list of going back to them again and asking them again, or how are we doing?
I think at this point, one of the things that we did initially, uh, last fall is we did do that input and we sought feedback from both staff and families to give input on whether or not we were gonna be moving forward, uh, and considering an adoption of a pre-Labor Day start. So that was the input piece that we were seeking. As we were moving through the process, we were looking at, um, a, the physical makeup of the calendar and what that might look like. And so based on that feedback that we received then and based on additional feedback and looking at the data, uh, one of the things that I've really considered is what is the mental wellbeing of our staff as we think about, um, going from spring break, uh, to the end of the year? And I've looked at data in regards to staff absences and, um, you know, uh, we have data that on Fridays in May, twelve percent, um, of our staff have been absent. And then we have to, uh, look at those unfilled rates, uh, uh, for our substitutes that we're needing. And sometimes we have to seek, um, support from our TOS's. And, um, I think about that and how it has had an impact on our, our folks. And then I also think about, um, when, we've never done a pre-Labor Day calendar and, uh, we've never seen what that looks like in Hillsborough. And so one of my wonderings and, um, you know, I've had conversations with, um, Mary Kay about this is like, if we were to look at an adoption and posting this later in January, it gives folks time to give, uh, any feedback that they want, which is what we've normally done, uh, at that time and looking at those calendars. And then what we can do is if there is a determination that we are gonna adopt the proposed calendars, I would like to see what those staff absences would look like. Um, so also having, um, a little reprieve in the week, uh, for our staff in the spring. Because, um, I, I'm concerned about that in looking at the last two years' data of, um, staff absences and the impact that has, uh, on our staff. And then also the added burden of not having, uh, substitutes to fill positions and what that would look like, um, if we try this one year. And if it doesn't work, we're going to al- always look at our calendar, um, too, in terms of adopting a two-year calendar. in terms of adopting a two-year calendar. So I think trying to look at all those components and trying to make, you know, well-informed decisions. Now, I did chair that, did I learn a lot through this process? Oh, yes, I did. Would I do things differently? Oh, yes, I would. And I think one of the things is I've had conversations with my HR colleagues at other districts and I just wanted to seek feedback and say, how do you collect feedback from the community? How do you work your process? And it ranges very, very much so. And so I think I'm taking, I want to take some of those ideas moving forward to implement as we plan as we think of twenty six, twenty seven, twenty eight, twenty nine, which I know is far away, but believe me, the next thing you know, it's already there and we're in those spaces. And so I think those conversations that we have with folks to get feedback and all of the different layers of feedback and looking at all the data allows us to make informed decisions. But I, I think part of the process is some of that isn't out there for folks to see, you know, like what is the absence rate for our staff and those things. So that's something I've considered. Erica, did you have something?
I have a question. I know that in the past, like I like what you just said about, you know, where you go through the process and we adopt, but it's always also up to the board as well. If there's something significant happens or we look at our data, we can go back and put this on our agenda to look and change.
Yes.
In the middle of the year, we've done that before and look at our calendars. I just wanted to note that it's not like we can't change.
Yes. And I'm also, I want to share too that I'm taking all the feedback that I'm hearing and I am, I'm looking at that and I'm adding to that. So as we plan accordingly, you know, if we need to make changes, then we will make those changes based on the conversations that we have and the input that we're getting from our community and our staff.
I'd say we try not to make changes lightly because we know that has a huge impact. But yes, I, I don't see the current proposed calendar in our packet. What's the easiest way for us to find the current proposed calendar?
You could go back to the November.
That's really the easiest way?
That's probably the easiest way.
Wow, okay.
And that's on our webpage and you can just go ahead and click on that link. And I think it's page nineteen to twenty fourth. I do know that.
Okay. Any other questions?
Well, if your intent is to make alterations fully see it for the first time and I wrap it up.
Well, that's a great question. So just like what we did last time when the board made a recommendation that we adjust our winter break, I have to push that down too. So then you make the change that recommendation, I make the change and we push the adoption to February. So that's what happened last time. My only concern about that is we need to let our community know. And I'm also thinking about the communication campaign that needs to go out to our staff, needs to go out to our community. So if we are making big changes at this time, it'll push that adoption date down the line.
So currently we're not looking at revising the calendar. What's in the November package? What you hope to prove in January and just give us people more time to digest it.
Correct.
A little bit more heads up and other meetings worth of heads up to try to find that.
Correct.
On page nineteen of the November packet.
Page nineteen to twenty four.
Okay.
Yeah, I appreciate that. It's just impossible that.
But yeah, it's possible, but right now there, I don't think there is one, you know. Right, right now we're not proposing any changes, right?
We're not proposing any changes.
So there, I'm, I am concerned because I know we've been talking about these. So putting it off another month, we get more feedback.
Or really just more time for the community to digest the changes.
Correct.
And and you have a plan for how the communication is going to go.
We're going to do it in the normal process that we typically do when we post a calendar and we put it in first reading, then we wait to hear from feedback if there's any. And we had, just like we did last year. So we're going to go through our normal process at this time. Any other questions?
And of course, if there are more questions, you can email Travis in common in between now and January seventeenth.
Actually, it would be at the regular session. So I think it's the twenty third.
I would bet we talk about it.
Yes.
The early January meeting. This feels like it's going to come up.
Yes. Thanks for that consideration. I appreciate it.
Uh, next report, agenda item is the bond program review report. Michelle?
Yeah, thank you Chair Watson. This is the sixth and final report that we'll bring to the board on our bond program. Special thanks to Jeff Jones, who's the point of contact for this review. It's an, it's an additional independent auditor. Moss Adams does this work for us. And this is on top of our regular audit work that happens. And an effort just to make sure that the community feels extremely assured that we are abiding by all of the promises. And you guys are well aware of that, but this is another way to communicate that to the community. And we'll probably lean on this as we move forward to any future bonds. So no recommendations for changes. It was a good review. And there's no action needed here tonight. Just a report in case you have any questions.
Questions on the bond report? All right. Thank you. Moving on to our lengthy action items section of the meeting. First up, the comprehensive financial report for the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three school year. We had an audit meeting this afternoon with our auditors. Several board members were able to attend. Michelle, do you have anything to add?
Uh, no, just thank you. I'm thankful for our audit partners who do a very comprehensive review of the report that we produce. And they are also kind of ongoing partners with us of different situations arise during the year that are new or unfamiliar to us. They help with guidance. They also help with any new requirements, GASB requirements that have come forward for us. So they've just been really good partners in that work. Again, special thank you to Jeff Jones, who is really the genius that brings all of these numbers together and helps me translate them in a way that makes sense to myself and to you as well. So big thanks. And this is an actual required action item that the board review and approve this report before we can send this information to the Bergen Department of Education and the Secretary of State's office. So hoping to get a motion.
Uh, do you guys like to make a motion first, discussion first? Any questions for Michelle?
I was gonna move that the board of, that the board of directors accept the annual comprehensive financial report for twenty two, twenty three.
It's been moved by Director Lopez and seconded by Director Pantoja that the board of directors accept the annual comprehensive financial report for twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three. Is there any further discussion?
Patrick?
I couldn't get out of work means attend the audit committee meeting before five, but so you may have talked about it in detail, but just for reading material, then it, I noticed that the auditor found noncompliance with the local budget law in the extra legal spending. And I noticed that they note that report that happened in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen year ago.
Oh, oh, yes. So the, yeah, so the, um, the noncompliance with the local budget law with regards to the extra legal spending happened five years ago in the auditor's report and a compliance plan was put into place to prevent recurrence and it's occurred. So I want to use that something we should be concerned about, that the same type of noncompliance recurrence felt shortly.
Yes. I mean, we were, we were also concerned when we had that finding in two thousand seventeen, eighteen. We did develop some action steps at that time. And in our corrective action plan, which is the next item coming up, we've identified, I'm just making sure that those controls are in place, which have served us well for five years. Unfortunately, they, they weren't enough in twenty two, twenty three. The situation was unique in the way the cash flows were working and we did not come back to the Budget Committee and ask for supplemental budget to be approved. So that was the local budget law requirement that we, we missed in retrospect. So our corrective action plan actually includes a supplemental budget review, like kind of a preparatory holding spot in our regular budget developed calendar. So that when we're all together with the Budget Committee, they can be a part of that process as well. So we haven't had to do that in Hillsborough before. We've been pretty good about setting our appropriations and then adjusting them as we come towards the end of the year. But there were some unique circumstances for twenty two, twenty three that were explained in the report. So I'm glad you brought that up because that was our very next topic. So, so thank you for that. I do feel like we will have our checkpoints in place and Superintendent Ryman and you guys will hold us accountable for that as well.
And if you'll indulge me for a second, I've been immersed in this for longer than everybody else. So I, being aware of it, attended the audit meeting before you guys received the packet. So I, if I could try to summarize in less dense, I don't think it was the same situation as seventeen eighteen. I think it was similar. What, what happened to cause this, just so everybody knows, supply chain issues in the twenty twenty one, twenty two school year made it so that things that were allocated in the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty school year budget were not able to be purchased. It's not uncommon. That happens from time to time. As you all kind of remember in the pandemic, how hard it was to get stuff. It was accentuated even more and federal funding, one-time funding for some of those things was noteworthy. What happened was, so our accounting department believed that as is normally the case, they can make appropriations adjustments to the budget to accommodate for money that was not spent at the end of twenty two for things that were supposed to have been spent in that year. So the, the twenty, the twenty-three anomalies that are being called out are due to the twenty twenty one inability to purchase things. That makes sense. So the money was allocated, it was unable to be spent. The ending fund balance was probably higher than we expected, but that's not uncommon. And the financial department thought normal appropriations adjustments process will be able to handle that. The stuff we were intending to buy, one example is milk cartons. The, the actual cartons that the milk goes into, the vendor could not provide enough milk cartons. For example, nutrition services was a big area of concern for this. And so what happened was over ten percent, you cannot do with appropriate appropriations adjustment. It has to be a, what's it called? Supplemental budget. So the mistake was that by the time the duration for getting the board to approve a supplemental budget had passed, that's when they finally realized, oh, we're, we should have done a supplemental budget instead of appropriations. So that makes sense. So that may, it's a long way to go, but basically stuff that was supposed to be bought in the twenty one budget was able to be, unable to be bought. It was allocated for. That money sat in the account at the end of twenty one. At the twenty-two budget, they bought some of those things with the money allocated in twenty one. It made it look like we spent extra money in twenty two. But it was just money that was left over from twenty one. So what we've done is put in place another set of procedures that Michelle's department will use every year roughly two months ago, October-ish, before the deadline to file a supplemental budget comes up to try to catch this ahead of time. So I, in talking with our auditors, I think we are on the leading edge of this. Many school districts have not had their audit completed. Many school districts have not filed their comprehensive plan. They will not receive their January general fund allocation until they do that. So because we are sort of ahead of the game, we may have found this first. I think the pandemic situations of twenty one are not just going to impact us. I think it's going to be a lot of people. That said, we made a mistake and the corrective action plan is how we fix that mistake. So a little more color or whatever to the equation, Monique, in that you were at the, I mean, am I, is that roughly how you understand things?
Yeah.
Yeah. So with that in mind, uh, further questions or whatever, right? And I get it. When we talk about a board member's jobs, three jobs, hiring the superintendent, set policy and the budget. And we made a mistake because we didn't file a supplemental budget in time and this is our corrective action plan to do that. But what happened was supply chain issues in twenty one. And I, I doubt this ever happens again, but we put systems in place to try to correct it. And yes, I guess whatever we had put in place in seventeen, eighteen, we're not adequate to catch the amount of supply chain dynamics that were in twenty one. It was just, I can't imagine it ever happens again, but it could. And so I think our, what our, the corrective action plan is telling us is that we were, we're attempting to put systems in place to catch it for next time. But good questions. Yeah. Does that make it a little more clear or worse? Does that make it worse?
Well, I, I, I appreciate you sharing, you shared and the, I, to be clear, I found the report very comprehensive. I appreciated it and answered many of my questions. And I think we've been a leader of the school district that recognized our team, recognized our exemplary budgeting. And the only reason I asked for more information there is because, you know, I feel like as a board, our, our role is to look for patterns. Seeing that the auditors had a similar current pattern five years ago, I'm a hundred percent sure that the new corrective action plan will five years from now have another issue. So I trust that it will. I wanted to flag that. But I do have great trust and confidence in our team. I think they do act more.
I'm not a hundred percent convinced that we'll catch it next time. Just that hope of it. Are you a hundred percent convinced it'll catch it next time or you just hope it will?
Hundred percent.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, we won't get caught out again. The other thing that came up in the audit committee meeting was how many different types of testing and review we're going through right now for Ester funding. We're in a monitoring thing with the Department of Ed, which is, you know, their prerogative as an agency is to monitor districts as they go through this. So we're going through that. We just sailed through Title III. Thank you, Olga, for your work on that. And we're also, our nutrition services is going through an additional review through ODE. And that's on top of all of the other things that we're doing. So just really great work happening in Hillsborough. And I hope that this doesn't reflect negatively on any of that because this was a checkbox that that procedurally we should have been able to catch and we will catch next time.
And Michelle and I have spoken many more times than we normally do in a week. And a lot of it was around, I think what you're going to see and what I hope you see is sort of a knee jerk reaction for board members like, oh, my gosh, problem with the budget. Right? And that's what we're seeing. So good, nice job. Erica?
Yeah. So I just had a couple of things. One is, I mean, I think we hear a lot about the classroom and instruction and all of that in our presentations, but this is the financial piece is such a big piece of of this organization and making sure that it runs. And it's, there's so many tedious things around how to make sure that we abide by all the rules that we have to abide by as a public education agency. So I just applaud the work and that we also get, you know, certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting for our school district in this audit report. And just another thing that we also have, there's a different name on our report from our auditor, which I like to see when we change. And that means that there's a different set of eyes, a different group that is looking at our documents. And it's not just the same group that we go to, but I also just noted that and wanted to to say that, that, that I, I enjoy that. And I agree, this audit report is always such a great thing to go through. But also just illustrate how, how this other area, it doesn't get a lot of attention, but it's such a big component on making sure that the doors are open and the lights are on in all our buildings and that we are running as smooth as we are. So thank you.
And I apologize to Michelle and her team and the rest of the board for not sort of setting the stage. I should have started with that, but because it, it took me, maybe I'm dumber than the average bear, but it took me a lot longer to get to where I am now than I should have. So it took longer. Michelle explained it to me more times than I should have for me to understand sort of exactly what happened and why we're mostly okay. And it's, it's our understanding that the corrective action plan satisfies all the legal requirements. And so, so the motion on the table now is to approve it. And then once we approve it, we approve the corrective action plan. And then we get our general fund allocation in January. Any further discussion?
Confirming for just a moment that we have one.
Confirming for just a moment that we have one motion to accept the annual comprehensive financial report, and then we have a separate motion for the corrective action.
Right.
That is correct.
And the motion on the table now is for to accept the annual comprehensive financial report for twenty-two, twenty-three. Rose, can you call the roll, please?
Sheehan Kim.
Aye.
Erica Lopez.
Aye.
Patrick McGuire.
Aye.
Nancy Thomas.
Aye.
Monique Ward.
Aye.
Yvette Pantoja.
Aye.
Mark Watson.
Aye. Motion carries. Next up, I'll do this one. Sure. I move that the board directors approve the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three annual comprehensive financial report plan for corrective actions.
Second.
It's been moved by me and seconded by Director Ward that the board directors approve the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three comprehensive, annual comprehensive financial report plan for corrective actions. Is there any further discussion? I feel it was my responsibility to make the motion because this oversight had this mistake happen on my watch. I think we could have, like, the way board members look at the financial plan, we could have realized that the any fund balances twenty-two seemed pretty high, but I didn't catch it. So, I mean, I feel as responsible as anybody else for this oversight. Any further discussion?
Aye. My only input is, given what we just went through in the country as a whole, if this is the only thing that can happen, thank you.
Lights are on the whole time. Rose, can you call the roll, please?
Sheehan Kim.
Aye.
Erica Lopez.
Aye.
Patrick McGuire.
Aye.
Nancy Thomas.
Aye.
Monique Ward.
Aye.
Yvette Pantoja.
Aye.
Mark Watson.
Aye. Motion carries. Next action item is good news. Brooke, do you have anything you want to share about the SIA plan?
Michelle has.
Oh, alright.
I have the mic. I'm going to keep this going. So the Student Investment Act agreement is, it's a grant through the Oregon Department of Education. It's the only one that we get and we are fortunate to receive many that requires that the board review and see the grant agreement. It does have a lot of like performance target data in there. Everything we brought forward is part of our integrated guidance plan is in this agreement. So that's why we're bringing it here for you tonight. And we had some suggestions and some great questions about it. So Brooke can answer any good question.
Any questions regarding the grant?
The only person on there still has a mic. There's a.
We have notified them of the contact change. We received this right before it was due to go to the, in the board packet. And it's been a challenge because we aren't able to access the student investment account funds until we get this in front of you. So we decided not to send it back, but we, we've let them know of some of the corrections like that that need to happen.
Other questions? Would anybody like to make a motion?
I move that the Board of Directors approve the Student Investment Act Grant Agreement.
Second.
It's been moved by Director Lopez and seconded by Director Thomas that the Board of Directors approve the Student Investment Act Grant Agreement. Is there any further discussion? How'd you say, you could expect us or me to contact you offline or all y'all? The, it's not an OSBA event. It's Washington County School Boards getting together to have a legislative summit in January. We are working towards that. I'm part of the planning committee. Erica's part of the planning committee. So we are working on conducting that event in conjunction with our other Washington County partners. And one of the agenda items we've discussed is trying to elevate student voice. We usually like it when students present. We would love to get a SIA success story to be presented by some of our students if that's something that seems like we can do. So be aware that that request is coming for a January event. Rose, can you call the roll, please?
And Kim.
Aye.
Erica Lopez.
Aye.
Patrick McGuire.
Aye.
Nancy Thomas.
Aye.
Monique Ward.
Aye.
Yvette Pantoja.
Aye.
Mark Watson.
Aye. Motion carries. Next up, we get to approve the Construction Three class that we talked about last time.
I received no questions from our presentation in November. So thank you again though to Melissa and, and the construction teacher, Todd Patterson at Glencoe High School for all of their work preparing for that presentation.
Would anybody like to make a motion?
I move that the Board of Directors approve the proposed course Construction Three.
It's been moved by Director Thomas and seconded by Director Pantoja that the Board of Directors approve the proposed course Construction Three. Is there any further discussion? Outstanding. Big fan of this one. Rose, can you call the roll, please?
Sheehan Kim.
Aye.
Erica Lopez.
Aye.
Patrick McGuire.
Aye.
Nancy Thomas.
Aye.
Monique Ward.
Aye.
Yvette Pantoja.
Aye.
Mark Watson.
Aye. Motion carries. Next up, our early literacy, literacy success grant. Oh, you just said we only have to do application for one, but we have another one? Audrey, do you have something to add for this?
It's just the approval. Yeah. And, and I haven't received any questions from our presentation. So
Okay.
If there's anything else, so I'm happy to answer it.
Would anybody like to make a motion?
I move that the Board of Directors approve the early literacy success grant.
Second.
It's been moved by Director Pantoja and seconded by Director Ward that the Board of Directors approve the early literacy success grant. Is there any further discussion?
I wasn't able to be at the last board meeting, but watching it back, I'm just so excited about this program. I think this has a lot of really great things in it and I'm excited to see, you know, how the high dosage tutoring goes. And it's just, so I'm really excited to see the results from this. Thank you for bringing it together.
And thanks for our communications team for always keeping our channel updated. So Director McGuire could watch that.
Thank you for your words. I'll let Gina McLean know as well. She's doing most of the work behind the scenes. So she's pretty phenomenal.
Any further discussion? Rose, can you call the roll, please?
Sheehan Kim.
Aye.
Erica Lopez.
Aye.
Patrick McGuire.
Aye.
Nancy Thomas.
Aye.
Monique Ward.
Aye.
Yvette Pantoja.
Aye.
Mark Watson.
Aye. Motion carries. Our next action item is sort of multi-fold. I believe we have to do them all individually. So would you like to discuss them as a group or do you rather just sort of discuss them one at a time? One at a time? Okay. So the first one is about the OSBA Board of Directors position. Let's make a motion that we can discuss about that.
I move that the Board of Directors cast its vote for Tristan Irvin for the OSBA, OSBA Board of Directors, position sixteen.
Second. It's been moved by Director Lopez and seconded by me that the Board of Directors cast its vote for Tristan Irvin for the OSBA Board of Directors, position sixteen. Is there any further discussion? Sure.
So real quick, I guess this kind of applies to all four of them.
Sure.
In preparing for this meeting, I thought I should say briefly that I, you know, full honesty with my constituents, our constituents, I have sort of a lesser standard of review for these state things than I do for things here in our local Hillsborough school district. So if that concerns any of my constituents, feel free to email me, but I feel like I only have a certain amount of time. And so if some of these things with the bylaws, if they have been things that were affecting policy here in Hillsborough, I would ask even deeper, but I, because they're state association things, I, we have one of our board members on the state association that trusts their judgment to look into this. And so on the surface, it all seems to make sense with the bylaws changes and both of the board positions are uncontested. And so if people are volunteering to put themselves forward and there's no one else running, then I looked at it at a surface level and it seemed good, so I intend to support it. I know that thinking frankly, we as board members this past month, because of an abrupt change in leadership of the state association level, got some emails from board members around the state saying we'd like to look into this board, state board matter more closely and so on and so forth. And so I choose to spend my time mostly on what's going on here in Hillsborough schools and let those who have volunteered on our board take leadership role in the state association, look into the state association matters. But I try to stay on top of it as well, but I tend to vote in favor of all these having, on the surface, they all look good. But I think constituents are interested in more detail. I want to assure them that we have members of our board who are in leadership roles of the state association and can answer questions more closely than I could.
That member is me. I was just going to say, at least until the end of the year. Both of these positions are uncontested, as you said, Patrick. It is a bigger time commitment, additional time commitment for local board members to then serve on another board as a state. And so that, I think that it poses a challenge for them being contested because it's just a lot of additional work. I think the other thing is that, as you mentioned, a lot of us are really focused on our local boards and what's happening in our district. And the role more of the state board is a lot more heavier on legislative advocacy because most of our districts don't have lobbyists. And so that's the role that they play. And I feel like that's really at that state level where where, what the focus is more on. So just providing more context. And I will, I do want to say Tristan just wanted to say that really impressed with her participation in our last meeting and really engaged in doing our legislative work as well in planning. So.
Yeah, both of the positions were unopposed and Director Irvin is part of the planning committee for the upcoming legislative summit. And I would say, not to speak on her behalf or anything, but I intend to vote to support her. And she is not unaware, I would say she's very aware of the somewhat upheaval of OSBA right now. And I'll order directly. She, she looks forward to being part of the leadership that helps put us on a better track. Rose, can you please call the roll?
Sheehan Kim.
Aye.
Erica Lopez.
Aye.
Patrick McGuire.
Aye.
Nancy Thomas.
Aye.
Monique Ward.
Close.
Yvette Pantoja.
Aye.
Mark Watson.
Aye. Motion carries. Next up, the Legislative Policy Committee. Somebody want to make that motion?
I move that the Board of Directors cast its vote for Becky Timchuck for the OSBA Legislative Policy Committee, position sixteen.
Second.
It's been moved by Director McGuire and seconded by Director Lopez that the Board of Directors cast its vote for Becky Timchuck for the OSBA Legislative Policy Committee, position sixteen. Is there any further discussion? I'll just add that Becky's been serving in this capacity for quite some time as a member of the Beaverton Board. She's currently a member of the ESD Board and is looking to continue again, unopposed. And Becky's record lobbying in the legislature is tremendous. So I feel pretty good about her continuing in that role. Feel great about that. She's also part of the planning committee. So the planning committee met recently and I'm looking forward to, we're one of the few counties, places that oftentimes, you know, a representative could represent three or four counties or big geographic areas. We're in a densely populated area and all of the boards, mostly all of the boards in Washington County get together separately, just by ourselves to say, let's have a meeting where we can talk with our legislators every January before session. And I'm glad to have been part of that committee for a couple of years and looking forward to having that event again this January. Any further discussion? Rose can call the roll, please.
Sheehan Kim.
Aye.
Erica Lopez.
Aye.
Patrick McGuire.
Aye.
Nancy Thomas.
Aye.
Monique Ward.
Aye.
Yvette Pantoja.
Aye.
Mark Watson.
Aye. Motion carries. Alright, next up, the OSBA resolution to create the Rural Caucus. Somebody like to make a motion?
I move that the Board of Directors approve Resolution One to create the Oregon Rural School Board Members Caucus and designate a seat on the OSBA Board of Directors and the Legislative Policy Committee.
Second.
It's been moved by Director Thomas and seconded by Director Ward that the Board of Directors approve Resolution One to create the Oregon Rural School, School Board Member Caucus and designate a seat on the OSBA Board of Directors and the Legislative Policy Committee. Is there any further discussion?
Just that they're at the state meeting to be attended. This was well talked about, I think, for that. And it seemed to be that there was a great enthusiasm for that. Most of the counties that were actually, the districts that would actually do this on the upside of cap cake. And they felt unsung about it. So that is part of the observation that I made at the state meeting.
Yeah, I'll add, I guess, I don't know how necessary this is, but I tend to vote to support it. I feel like with a hundred ninety-seven districts and most of them being rural, seventy-something percent being rural, that voice is already represented, but also feels like rural districts have something unique about them. I would say that it would be my intent as the Chair of our Board to put forth to the rest of us after, after this finishes, or if this passes, there'll be a number of districts that mathematically meet the density requirement to just automatically become members if they would like. But anybody who feels like they would like to be added can file a request to be added. And with us having many schools in farmland, West Union, Groener, Farmington View, like the list, there's a, I would suggest that we're a pretty good representation of both urban and rural districts right here in our own little community. And so I, I would, I would ask, if this is approved by the OSBA Board or by the school boards in Oregon to add this, I would probably advocate for us next year to lobby to try to join the Oregon League. Any further discussion? Rose, can you call the roll, please?
Sheehan Kim.
Aye.
Erica Lopez.
Aye.
Patrick McGuire.
Aye.
Nancy Thomas.
Aye.
Monique Ward.
Aye.
Yvette Pantoja.
Aye.
Mark Watson.
Aye. Motion carries. Next up is a resolution regarding the OSBA bylaws. I'm not super familiar with this, but I'm pretty convinced it's a good idea. So anybody like to make a motion?
I, I move that the Board of Directors approve Resolution Two to adopt the proposed amendments to the OSBA bylaws.
Second.
It's been moved by Director Lopez and the seconded by Director Pantoja that the Board of Directors approve Resolution Two to adopt proposed amendments to the OSBA bylaws. Is there any further discussion?
I would just add, in this particular for our fellow board members, that this item was something that there was a lot of talk about some of the changes on here. Specifically, just, we just voted for a rural caucus, adding the caucuses. Now this is our second caucus in OSBA. Is, there's a lot of language in our bylaw that does not address how these caucuses are to function in the governance of OSBA. Currently, as states, they have one voting seat in the board. It's already, it's like a twenty-member board. And so there's just more things to come on amending the bylaws to better explain what the role of the caucuses and their leadership has when it comes to OSBA. And so I think there was just one item here, for example, that I would say it will come back again is whether or not a caucus leader in a position, the president of the caucus, can then also be the president of OSBA. That is something that is still pending. So will be probably something else that we see, but just wanted to give you an update of what the party discussion was about.
Any other discussion? Rose, can you call the roll, please?
Sheehan Kim.
Aye.
Erica Lopez.
Aye.
Patrick McGuire.
Aye.
Nancy Thomas.
Aye.
Monique Ward.
Aye.
Yvette Pantoja.
Aye.
Mark Watson.
Aye. Motion carries. Alright, final action item is to approve the budget calendar. Planning calendar. Michelle, anything to add?
Just a note, it looks a little different because the situation page includes the supplemental budget piece so that it's aligned just for our records and for our future planning. Thank you.
I like that's called out. Any questions for Michelle? Would anybody like to make a motion?
I move that the Board of Directors adopt the planning calendar for the twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-five budget.
Second.
It's been moved by Director Ward and seconded by Director McGuire that the Board of Directors adopt the planning calendar for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five budget. Any further discussion? Rose can call the role, please.
She and Kim?
Aye.
Erica Lopez?
Aye.
Patrick McGuire?
Aye.
Nancy Thomas?
Aye.
Monique Ward?
Aye.
Yvette Pantoa?
Aye.
Mark Watson?
Aye. Motion carries. All right, we've come to the end of our agenda roughly. Uh, time for HCU, HEA reports. Oh, there you go.
Good evening. My name is David Eggleston. I've been privileged to be a bus driver in Hillsborough School District since, uh, two thousand and been a part of the union, uh, over those years with a short lapse to support family a few years ago. I've been part of the bargaining team and just, just became Membership Officer for HCU. In fact, haven't even attended an HCU board meeting yet. Chair Watson, directors elected from the community, student representatives, and all of you supporting the board in their work, Superintendent Ryman, administrative and super tech staff, licensed staff, classified staff. Thank you to the custodians and facilities folks opening the building, having the lights on, multimedia folks, so we can all hear and see one another. Few announcements. We have, uh, some bargaining coming up, which is, I think, on the agenda for us all, uh, coming up after the first of the year. Some words of appreciation on Estasia Hernandez. Uh, an SCA at Century has put together holiday gift baskets for the students in Century's teen parent program. Grateful for that. Ongoing collaborative efforts, uh, with the district to address concerns of safety among SCA staff. Appreciation for the open door allowing us to discuss the difficulties facing many of our staff. Thank you. And working jointly to create better ways to support staff. Thank you. A shout out to the benefits team for their hard work. They navigated an increased number of claims despite ever-changing rules and the five-year dependent verification and open enrollment, all happening good currently. So thank you, benefits team. Okay, so I'm wearing an HSD t-shirt tonight, not an HCU t-shirt. What's that about? There's, there's, there's two reasons. So on the back of this shirt, it says what we see all around us on all of the walls of this room, no value and empower every student to achieve their dreams. And, uh, I uphold that for two reasons tonight. We uphold that. We at HCU see it as being our promise alongside you to support the students of our district for this to happen. And so we're in alignment with you, HEA, to see that this happens. Second, as many of you gathered here know, one of the most effective pedagogies or teaching strategies for values such as know, value and empower is the embodiment of those values in community. The embodiment of those values in community. And so we at HCU, we commit to you as the board. We commit to you that we will encourage the members of our unit to hold the intention of knowing, valuing and empowering everyone here. Licensed staff, knowing, valuing and empowering licensed staff, administrative staff, super, supervisory technical staff, board, embodying that so that the students see us embodying these values. And then we come tonight also with a, a request. We request that you all embody or hold the intention of embodying, uh, these values, know, value and power all of our classified staff. And that as students seek to achieve their dreams, that they will not only see it taught, but they'll see it lived in our relationships with one another. And as they move out into career in college and VOTAC or wherever they go, they'll know it's possible to be known, to be valued and to be empowered in real life. Thank you all.
Good evening, Chair Watson, Vice Chair Pantoa, fellow board members, Superintendent Ryman and administrative leaders. My name is Mary Kate Babcock. My pronouns are she, her, eh. I'm a proud educator and the Hillsborough Education Association President, representing and speaking on behalf of our licensed educators. Thank you to the district for hearing our request to delay the calendar adoption in an effort to get adequate feedback from our staff and our community. Since my last address, I have received the following concerns from our HEA leadership. A shortened summer for employees, family and community. A reduced summer due to additional three licensed non-contract days for those seeking supplemental employment opportunities, particularly our early educators. A suggestion to link the staff development day to the October statewide in-service day to allow educators more time to settle in and familiarize themselves with their students and their students' families. Many educator leaders of, of our HEA Association said they're not interested in the addition of the licensed non-contract day before winter break and the concern of fewer days for instruction and assessment in May. Additionally, Forest Grove begins post-Labor Day and gets out at the same time as HSD's proposed first reading count. It has been brought to my attention that educators and support staff sought days off last spring, resulting in a hardship on the district to get subs. I'm here to say, let's be responsive and address the needs of our educators and support staff to achieve a healthy work-life balance to alleviate burnout. Over the past year and a half as HEA President, I've witnessed our incredible educators as they are facing challenges that if left unaddressed can significantly impact their dedication to this noble profession. The key to retention is universal across all professions. Trust, respect and value your employees. Recognizing educators as experts in their content area, respecting educators as professionals and acknowledging that they're invaluable to the work we accomplish as a district is paramount. When I began my career at HSD, I was provided with a mentor. I'm eternally grateful for my mentor Cindy Yukum. I am forever thankful that HSD provided the support for my first year in the district. Not only did I gain a mentor and a trusted colleague, but I also gained a lifelong friend. A mentor can provide emotional support, helping educators deal with the stresses and challenges of their work. They can also provide guidance on career advancement, assisting educators in setting goals and achieving their professional aspirations. These supports help retain our educators, many of whom leave the field just after a few years on the job. HSD is also advocating that our students' social and emotional needs be adequately addressed. This includes proper, this includes proper safety training, resources and staffing. If educators could experience improvements in student behavior and proper interventions that is conducive to quality instruction and learning, this would improve morale and efficacy. Additionally, educators, students and families would also experience a reduction in anxiety and stress because they're getting what they need, creating a win-win for everyone who's involved. HEA is also advocating for additional support for our spread educators as we address their workload and caseloads. In a recent survey, when asked, how many hours do you work outside the contract day? We received the following results from one hundred and one staff members' responses. Zero to two hours, twenty-six point seven percent. Three to five hours outside their contract day, twenty-seven point seven percent. Six to nine hours outside of the contract day, twenty-three point eight percent. Ten plus hours, eighteen point eight percent. And then we had another, we don't know if it was less than or more than two, um, less than zero or more than ten plus, three percent. According to our secondary dual-language educators, the need for language-based curriculum is immense as the amount of workload consumes their weekends translating. Educators have experienced the impact of workload as they need to provide academic language that is appropriate for differentiating instruction needs for their students that are below grade level. Now double their workload again if they have a split classroom and they're a dual-language teacher. Imagine if we hired more counselors, nurses, social workers and psychologists to better equip our schools to help students facing mental health challenges. For the American School Counselor Association, schools should have at least one counselor for every two hundred and fifty students enrolled. This could be life-altering for our students, enabling them to receive the wraparound services and support necessary for education they deserve. According to our educators, the lack of administrative support is reported to be the most critical component of school working conditions resulting in attrition. Dr. Jared Smith's learning curve tells us instructional leadership doesn't have to be complicated. Administrators should view classroom visits as that golden opportunity to identify the specific things a teacher is doing well. In a time when it's difficult to retain educators, few things improve retention better than a well-timed, authentic, positive feedback from a supervisor. Given the sensitive nature of instructional feedback, the district must ensure administrators are cultivating a culture and climate of support while reserving critiques for low performers. It's also important for educators to feel heard, feel comfortable speaking up, and when they need to address a concern to improve work, workload or working conditions, it should be done so without fear of retaliation. Our working conditions are our students' learning conditions. It's a reminder of the symbiotic relationship between our educators' wellbeing and our students' success. As we navigate these challenges collectively, let us work together to create an environment that not only retains our educators, but also enhances the overall education experience for our students. As the holiday season approaches, I wanna take a moment to extend my warmest wishes to each member of our dedicated school board. The tireless commitment and hard work you contribute to our educational community does not go unnoticed. May this holiday season bring you moments of joy, relaxation and the opportunity to recharge for this new year ahead. Your dedication to ensuring the success and wellbeing of our students is truly commendable and I'm grateful to be part of a community with such devoted leaders. Wish you and your families a joyful and peaceful holiday season. May we build with laughter, with love and the company of those who matter most.
Next up is student representatives time. Do you have anything you wanna add tonight?
Yeah, so, um, I actually, you know,
Yeah.
I really appreciate and enjoy listening to that ELD curriculum adoption proposal because my first language is Farsi and my dad stopped speaking Farsi at home right before I started kindergarten because he was afraid I wouldn't be able to keep up in school. And the elementary school I went to only offered like spoken ELD, so like we were taken out, like an hour out of the school day and worked with, I think, one, one, one of those counselors or not, or I don't know who, what, but we worked with one person that could probably shoot an hour off. And now I'm almost seventeen, or I am seventeen, I'm almost eighteen, and I'm still trying to learn Farsi again. And I'm also trying to learn Spanish for my mom. So I think, um, integrated, integrated ELD is really important because let's ELD students have the same access and co-op opportunity that education that other students have, while also not letting students feel like they have to give up or neglect something that's like daddy or.
Aliana, thanks for that comment. Appreciate it. Um, wanted to give a shout out to, uh, Michelle and her team. Thank you for the great stewardship of resources that you did during the pandemic and still today, um, invest in every dollar of our, uh, SIR funds to meet the goals that we have for our students. Much appreciated for you and your team. Also, at the same time of year that you're doing SIA and High School Success, well, that's, so this is a busy time. You are appreciated. Um, also, thank you to everybody who participated in the planning of our literacy plan that the board adopted tonight. Thanks for adopting that plan, school board members, that, uh, grant from the state of Oregon on early literacy is gonna, um, strengthen the, the practices we already have going in HSD around early literacy and bi-literacy. Um, Patrick, in a conversation, you had asked me to advocate and voice the importance of literacy later in, in our educational career as well. And I guess tonight's an opportunity for me to make a little bit of a comment on that, that, um, when it comes to advanced course offerings like AP, IB, dual-credit, CTE, career pathways in general, um, literacy is foundational to all of those things. And so when we look at our strategic plan holistically, early literacy isn't just a goal for third grade. You all know it's a goal for later on in students' careers as well. So that's important for us to remember when we invest in that work. We also know that, um, educational attainment is a predictor of health and wealth among our students and in our community. And so when I think about early literacy, I also think about, um, social determinants of health and the wellbeing of our community as a whole. So, um, we can have more conversations about that another day, but I, I do believe in third grade, the third grade literacy goal that we have in HSD is our, in our strategic plan is gonna be foundational to our success as a school district and as a community into the future. Um, shout out to partners with HCU and HEA for, uh, meeting with our HR team and me and expressing concerns and having open dialogue ongoing about how to improve our school district together. Um, thank you to our schools and our students for putting together at this time of year canned food drives, clothing drives, coin drives, concerts, all the things that they do to bring light and, uh, wellbeing to families in our community. Um, thank you to, uh, our Washington Chamber who hosted an award ceremony and honored Yvette Alonso Garcia, who you all know. Um, a student who graduate, is graduating from our, uh, aerospace program, represented, uh, students on the board, uh, last year. Also to RJ who performed at said event and had me in tears singing this Billy Joel song that I can't listen to without crying. You know, the lullaby song? Don't get me started. I'm glad Hadley's not here to hear me say that I saw RJ perform a song. Um, thank you to our, uh, classified and licensed staff and school administrators who made conferences of wild success. We had about ninety percent of our, uh, elementary school families make connection with the school during conference week and about fifty percent of our middle schools and high schools, which is a good turnout for middle school and high school right on. And in the future, it'll be even better. And, um, lastly, check out hot news. We had four students highlighted for helping marketing internships downtown. Um, we always talk about our CTE programs as not a charity case for kids in school, but actually contributing to our community. And our students helped small businesses recover from the pandemic by helping with marketing campaigns. And also there are some really well-researched, uh, updated budget materials linked in that hot news from Beth and Michelle. So, um, a lot to investigate over the holidays. Um, happy holidays to everybody.
Sheen, do you have anything you would like to add tonight?
I want to appreciate everyone who gave a presentation today, um, especially the, the new CTE course offerings. Super excited about those. Um, and I would not have nullified everyone.
You. Erica, anything to add tonight?
Yes. Yeah, a little bit. Um, one, I'm gonna channel Hadley, since he's not here, that he has a concert next Tuesday.
He does.
So just a reminder, um,
It's on my calendar.
On our calendars. Um, yeah, you don't wanna miss it because we're not gonna, not hear about it if you do. Um, I guess the other thing I just wanted to say is I'm always just so, uh, grateful for, um, just the collaborativeness of our board and our district and seeing, um, just events unfold in other districts. It just, um, It just always just makes me feel really good about volunteering for this position and the people that we get to work with and our union partners and our administration, our superintendent, and our Board members. You see us up here and we don't always agree on things, but we always are respectful to each other. And that just, I am thankful for that at the end of this year to have that here. And the other piece I just wanted to acknowledge, I know we heard a lot of comments about the calendar and it's always, I know, scary trying something new or doing something different. And I definitely hear a lot of the challenges. And I know that because as a parent, for two months out of the year, we have to figure out what to do with our kids. And that's a lot of time. And so, we know that struggle and it's a lot. And I think it's also one of the really beautiful things that attracts people to our, this profession here is that they get that sign of summer, which is amazing. And I just wanted to say, like, I totally hear the feedback in the comments and I know that we are trying and doing our best. And we also want to see how it goes and collect information. And then, that's the great thing about trying things. As we try things, if they don't work, we go back to the drawing board. But we, that's part of us evolving and working together. And I just ask for grace as we do that every time. We do that every single meeting and every year on our Board. So, I again, just thank you again to all of you for your hard work, for your dedication, and have a very happy holidays and don't forget Hadley's concert next Tuesday.
Did I?
Yes, and that was my note as well. So, Hadley made an impression on all of us. I want to again say thank you to Brooke and to Michelle for answering my plethora of questions in the detail and that you give and provide to answer these questions so that we can make informed decisions. So, very, very much appreciate that. I also want to say thank you for everyone who's present here tonight and participating. Thank you for the presentations on CTE. Fantastic. And wish everyone a wonderful holiday season and a safe holiday season and looking forward to working with all of you in 2024.
Anything to add tonight?
Nothing.
That it?
Yeah.
Magic. Anything to add tonight?
Yeah, one serious thing and one fun thing briefly. On the serious note, after the resolution of the Portland Public Schools Act of action, the former education advisor to several governors had an opinion piece in Oregon Capital Chronicle that I think is worth reading. There may be something we agree or something we don't. But there's two quick passages I thought were of note. He talks about the relationship of the Legislature and local school boards in some of these budgetary issues that are arising. And he, a couple of quick lines, says, "With the exception of some local option levies and bonds for capital projects, every local school district budget is functionally set by the state. In effect, the 90 members of the Legislature function as a super-school Board, telling their underlings on local boards what they have to spend while remaining at arm's length from the consequences of underfunding in our schools." That's very confronting language. And we're fortunate to have legislators who have served on school boards, have served as president of the schools foundation, so who are not unaware of what we face as school district. But funding decisions by the state legislature don't always reflect the inflationary pressures on salaries and days of time. And there is nothing that administrators, teachers can do except to figure out how to deal with it, you know, if it's dealt by the legislature. And we all talk about this every year, but I thought that article really touched on some things that were important and I encourage people to read it as we move forward with our contract negotiations and we're trying to get our schools well-funded and our constituents asking us for smaller class sizes and for more specialists. But us, as Board members, feeling frustrated by we have what the legislature gave us. We have to find a way to make it work. So, that's just a reminder that as we go into legislative advocacy in the new session, keep talking to legislators. And then, on the fun note, about four or five years ago, my mother and grandmother, I wanted to take them to see some, hear some Christmas music, holiday music. And so, we found a concert by the Oregon Corral, which was started by a Hillsborough School District choir instructor about 30 or 40 years ago. And it was the only professional corral, semi-professional corral in Maricopa. And it's called the Oregon Corral now. And they, you know, so we've been going every year since then to their holiday concert. It's just lovely. They have a 60-voice choir. And there, I was talking with their conductor, their artistic director after the program and telling them, oh, just because they introduced some of their high school student voices, intern voices that they have worked with by somewhere from the Beaverton School District to somewhere from the Hillsborough School District. And I told them, that's really great. That's neat that, you know, you guys are doing this and love the concert. Yeah, and so I told my homies here with Hillsborough Schools. And I said, actually, I just started working as a, as the choir instructor at, choir director at Century High School recently. So, he said, okay, so let's solve a problem. So, anyway, that was just a really neat thing to run into that. And I think it's really neat for the choir students at that high school that this professional artistic director for the Oregon Corral would also help to teach them. So, that's a beautiful thing. And I encourage folks if they want to hear Christmas music in future years, that they're going to that. A happy holiday support.
You have anything to add tonight?
Yeah, I'm supposed to say, thank you for all of your work and your presentations. And like Travis had mentioned about Yvette, it was really nice to see, you know, her get that recognition, but also see how related her parents were. They were so excited to see her up there and get that recognition, but also see all these other leaders go up to her and introduce themselves to her. And we were just really happy. And it was a beautiful thing to see, you know, because that's the thing that's. But I just want to take that and be happy holidays.
Thank you. Sorry to keep you, got a few things. One, thanks to our tech team and our ASL interpreters for integrating, hybridizing our meeting like it's just standard practice. It's not a thing that's difficult for us. It's just a thing we do now. So, well done, folks. Thank you. Thank you to Michelle for all the extra communication you had to put up with over the course of last week. I would say, when I heard budget irregularity, I probably overreacted a little bit. So, thank you for helping me walk through all of that. Look forward to, so I think, you know, you've heard me advocate for OSBA in the past. I think they're having a moment right now. And I think, well, I look forward to advocating for the appointment of Nancy to the OSBA Board. And I look forward to advocating for the appointment of Yvette to the Legislative Policy Committee to replace Eric and me. I think it's important for Hillsborough to remain, have our voice remain represented at that state level. The application, the reason these are on oppose is one because the application procedure is hard to manage and the website was broken and whatever. So, oftentimes, these are addressed by appointment after the open election period. And Nancy has put her name forward for that position and Yvette has put her name forward. So, I look forward to supporting them. I think they are the right leadership we need to help OSBA. I think it's a, it's a thing worth working on. I don't love, so we are going into bargaining with our two unions coming up, representing 95-plus. And thanks to Beth for those hot news links. If you haven't looked at those budget documents, they are amazing. Over 95% of our employees. I don't love it being an adversarial process when we really all feel like partners in the education of our kids. So, it doesn't need to be adversarial. And it hasn't really been in the past. We've always been able to work together to find solutions. I hope that continues. And I look forward to helping on one of those committees, probably coming up in January. And I would say, you know, I'm glad all of our neighboring districts are back in the classroom or in the classroom. And I think, to your point about legislative advocacy, and I think the door, for as tragic as that may have been, the door may be opened to finally have the conversation about the way we, that systemic, rather than fighting for CSL or Current Service Level or Actual Service Level, and hopefully, our legislators understand, like, Current Service Level just means we don't cut stuff and we don't give anybody raises that they deserve. And we don't address the neglected workforce for 20 years under this system. So, for 30 years, we've been under a system of state funding that I think if anything good comes out of this, I hope it's that we, and it's not going to happen in the short session. But most times, things that happen are planted, the seeds are planted. And then, so hopefully, in the next long session with what the governor's doing, with what some of our legislators are doing, we will be able to address the systemic nature of the way we fund schools in Oregon. And the budget document is brilliant, showing the percent of state school funding for education over the course of the last decade. Just percentage. And I understand if you're a legislator in lean times, you have to weigh the needs of the Human Services Department and addiction programs. But I would also suggest that providing a successful launching pad for our kids helps all of that, but it's a long-term plan, right? So, if you celebrate a holiday this time of year, I hope you have a great one and we are adjourned.